I'd like to call order this Board of Commissioners meeting. The date is Tuesday, September fourteenth. Our invocation today is by Commissioner Zylstra. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance following the prayer.
Lord, bless us as we meet to discuss matters of well-being of Ottawa County residents, impartial wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful and equitable conclusion. May we continue to seek your guidance, courage, and strength. Be with us in our deliberations and grant the gift of your grace and decisions we make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. In your name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Next thing on the agenda is roll call. Would you call the roll, please, Sheri?
Sure. Mr. Garcia, Mr. Bowman,
Here.
Mr. Zalstra,
Here.
Mr. Danenberg,
Here.
Mr. Methley,
Here.
Here.
Mr. Young,
Here.
Mr. Kyers,
Here.
Mr. Bergman,
Here.
Mr. Fenske,
Here.
We have a quorum.
Presentation of petitions and communications. Do you have anything?
I have none.
Okay. I have a couple of outstanding service award recipients that I need to meet with. First and done call, Ken Spur, the podium. Ken has received the external second quarter outstanding customer service award for 2021. Ken was nominated for being a patient, diligent caseworker for a friend of the court. The nominator noted that Ken makes you feel like a person in the situation, not a case number. Thank you, Ken, for an amazing job in making Ottawa County a place that everyone belongs.
Thank you.
Next person is Dave Boss. Did I pronounce it Boss?
Boss.
Boss. Dave has received the internal second quarter outstanding customer service award. Dave was nominated for assisting the Health Department with the Miles of Smiles dental van. The van's fuel gauge was not functioning properly. It was determined that they did not have enough diesel fuel to run the generator needed for the dentist to provide service or to make it to the gas station. They assisted by filling the maintenance truck's transfer tank with fuel and transporting it back to the dental van. Dave's efforts allowed many people to receive necessary dental care that day. He also provided peace of mind to public health or oral health team. Thank you, Dave, for your dedication to serving all residents and staff of Ottawa County. That's truly appreciated. The next thing on our agenda is GCSI update by Mr. Bob DeVries.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thanks since the last time I was able to come and speak with you. The legislature just finished their summer recess. There's been quite a bit of work going on behind the scenes in the budget and quite a bit going on related to redistricting. And so I'll give you an update on those, and I'm happy to answer any other questions you have, too. The budget needs to be done by the end of the month, and I believe that it will be. It's not quite as controversial as it has been in previous years. Part of the reason for that is that the billions of dollars that Washington DC has sent in the state are not yet being negotiated. And so the legislature and the governor have agreed to negotiate a fiscal year budget using state money, and they're pushing off future discussions about how to best use money from CARES Act. There's still CARES Act money from the last Congress left over, and there's quite a bit of money from the stimulus package earlier this year that has not yet been spent from this Congress. And so I anticipate several, at least two, if not more supplemental spending bills yet this fall, probably bleeding into the spring. But those will be separate discussions from the actual budget. Right now, the two big hangups in the budget seem to be higher ed funding and local government funding. And a lot of it is some Republican response to just to kind of different partisan issues right now. Higher ed is not the most popular thing, and local government is not the most popular thing among Republicans at the moment. The Senate and the governor are kind of on the same page with maintaining or slightly increasing funding to both of those entities, whereas the House Representatives is hoping for a cut in funding. My guess is that in the end, cooler heads will prevail, and at least the status quo will be maintained, or potentially small increases for both of those as well. The one budget project that we're working on for Ottawa County is some money for an underground or groundwater monitoring system that is slated to be included in one of these supplementals this fall. There's one specifically for water infrastructure. Senator Victory and Senator Bumpstead from the Muskegon County area are cosponsoring it together. Senator Victory has assured us that our million-dollar project will be funded in that. It's going to be an over-billion-dollar supplemental bill. And so we'll have to make sure we keep working on it, make sure the language stays in there. But as of this time, our project should be teed up for funding whenever that supplemental bill passes this fall. So that'll be a win for Ottawa County when it happens. There's a limited legislative schedule this month, mostly because the budget discussions happen, you know, behind closed doors. They happen in the Speaker's office, the Governor's office, Majority Leader's office, and having a session doesn't really impact that one way or the other. And so for the most part, the House and the Senate are meeting a day or two each week, but they're not having a very aggressive schedule. They want to keep their leaders freed up to continue negotiating the budget. It could be done as soon as this week, although I tend to think that generally the available time always gets used up. And so I'd imagine a budget passage in the last week of the month. And then, like I said, after that, they'll move right on to the supplemental bills. And I think you'll see extra funding towards transportation in addition to the underground water infrastructure stuff I mentioned before. The other thing that's taking up a lot of people's time and interest is the draft maps that are coming out from the new independent redistricting commission. As you guys all know, there was a constitutional amendment that changed the way Michigan does its redistricting. And now there is a thirteen-member commission that their full-time job right now is to draw lines for what our maps are going to look like. They've published some draft maps. It's been hard to keep track of, to be honest with you, because despite the, one of the goals of this new process being increased transparency and doing everything in the open, the only way we really have access to these draft maps is because reporters are able to, you know, take pictures of the maps when they're up on the screen, or some people have been able to take screenshots when they're shown on the Zoom feed. But it's been challenging to kind of get a good look at where things are now. They're not done, but we have seen some draft maps. The House maps, look, not too far away from where we are now. As you know, Ottawa County grew quite a bit. And so right now, we have one senator covering the entire county and three representatives covering the entire county. Those numbers will increase. We'll have to get at least a fourth representative to take a part of the county and a second senator at a minimum to take up part of the county. The House maps right now show a district senator on Holland Township and Park Township. Another one around Georgetown Township, Hudsonville and Jamestown, and Zeeland Township. And then the third district that runs kind of up the west side of the district through Grand Haven, Esprill Lake, and into Norton Shores. And a fourth district that is Allendale and kind of the entire northeast quadrant of the county, plus Ravanna and Fruitport and kind of the rural areas in Muskegon County. And so those would be the four districts. If the draft maps remain unchanged for the House, those would be the four areas for Ottawa County. And honestly, all four of those districts would be Ottawa County-centric districts. And so that would be a good thing for Ottawa County. I think we'd have four legislators rather than three in the House. It would increase our power and influence a little bit for getting commission and county priorities done in Lansing. The Senate has been a little bit more concerning. A draft map was published about a week ago that basically divided the county into four quadrants and then attached them to a Muskegon District and Grand Rapids District and the Southern Kent County District and Analegan County District. In my opinion, that would be about the worst-case scenario because we would have four districts where Ottawa County would make up the minority of the population. And so for the fastest-growing county, I feel like it's not too much to ask that our political influence increased in Lansing and not decreased. And this certainly would be a decrease. Since then, they published a new map, a new draft, where kind of Allendale and northeast Ottawa would be combined in with the Grand Rapids-based district and some of the northern Grand Rapids suburbs, whereas the rest of the county, plus a little bit of northern Analegan County, would make up another district. That, I think, is a little bit better, at least for maintaining Ottawa County's influence in the legislature. But once again, they're just drafts, and there are more drafts to come. The commission is a little bit behind in their timeline, partially because I think they've gone slower than anticipated, but also because the census data that they need to do their job was delayed significantly. Once the districts are all drawn, there will be a comment period. They'll be published, and a comment period for forty-five days. After that forty-five-day public comment period, the commission may go back to the drawing board and change things, or they may vote to just adopt them. If they change anything, they have to have another forty-five-day comment period. And so we're getting to the point where the goal is, the end of the year, to have all these finalized. And then a forty-five-day comment period puts you into the middle of February. And if they have to make some edits and do it again, it puts you kind of right into the middle of the spring. Right now, the filing deadline for all state offices is the middle of April. I anticipate that there's a chance, I think there's a chance that's going to get moved back into May just because if the districts aren't finalized until late spring, it's hard to expect people to have made a decision on whether to run for office or not in that short window. In fact, you'll see a lot of people are filing for office based on what they think might be an opening. If you look at our legislator, Jim Lilly, for example, he's being termed out. We know he can't run again. There are people that have filed for office to run for his seat, but I almost guarantee that some of them aren't going to be living in the district that is now open. We'll have to see what it looks like. And so people are just kind of guessing because they got to raise their money, and they got to go build their support, and there's not much else they can do at this point in time. One thing to note, on Thursday, the redistricting commission is meeting at Grand Valley all day long. They have a meeting from twelve to four. It's open to the public. They have another meeting from five until eight. They have time set aside in that meeting from five until eight for public comment. And so if any of you are inclined, I think it's a great opportunity to talk about why something like dividing Ottawa County up into four small chunks would be bad for Ottawa County. One of the criteria that the constitution requires the commission to use is a criteria called communities of interest. We got to keep communities of interest together. And then there's a strong argument for why Ottawa County is a community of interest, where we've got a lot of things in common across the county, some parts more than others. But even highlighting that, I think, can be helpful. But the idea that we would be divided into four separate state senate districts, potentially represented by four different senators, none of whom live in Ottawa County, would be, I think, a challenging thing. And so that's happening on Thursday from five until eight at Grand Valley. I'd encourage anybody that's interested to participate. And the last thing I was going to mention is Representative Mirman has introduced a bill that would create an additional circuit court judgeship for Ottawa County. As the board approved, I believe, in your last meeting, you passed a resolution authorizing that. Representative Mirman has introduced the bill. I've talked to the chairman of the House Judiciary Committee, and we will have that scheduled for action probably in early October. And I imagine it'll move quickly through there. Once it's through the House, it'll land in Senator Victory's judiciary committee on the Senate side, and he has assured us that he'll move it quickly as well. That's my update for today, but I would be happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Commissioners, any questions for Bob? Doesn't look like it.
All right. Thank you. Have a great afternoon.
The next thing is a presentation, budget presentation by Karen. Get your books out, I guess, right?
Good afternoon. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to present the 2022 proposed budget for Ottawa County.
Looks like Karen's having an issue with her pointer.
It's the...
Clicker. Yep. It's not clicking.
It's not. There we go. The agenda for today, I wanted to talk a little bit about the budget calendar, what we've done up to this point, and what the next steps will be. Presenting or preparing the 2022 budget and the assumptions that we used, and then finally, the proposed operating and capital budgets. Departments making requests, departments and elected offices making requests for both operating capital and personnel. We, in June or early summer, moved to a review process which includes fiscal services review. We have review meetings with all of those parties interested. The county administrator reviews it. And then last month, it was presented to the Finance and Administration Committee. Today, we are, the public hearing for the budget is on the agenda, and that has been advertised in the newspaper, and it's been available for the public to look at it, both on the website and in the clerk's office. Later in September, we'll go back to the Finance Committee for recommendation and then board, the second meeting of the board in September. And October one is the first day of our fiscal year. So some of our goals this year was we created a separate Parks Capital Improvement Fund. This is consolidated into our CIP. So segregating capital and operating for the Parks Commission helps manage funds and plan for operating and capital needs. We also continue to invest in the capital infrastructure funding. So as I had mentioned in previous years, we've been working on this for a while at funding, creating an ongoing funding stream for capital investment. This year, with the growth in property taxes, we were able to increase that by a million dollars. So we're at ongoing funding for capital at about 1.7 million. As with every year, we look at the property tax rate, and with the ultimate goal of balancing the budget, balanced budget is when your revenues plus user reserves equals expenditures. Click that one. Thank you. So the budget assumptions that we used in the 2022 budget was a six percent increase in property taxes, property tax values. This is, we work on this in collaboration with equalization in the Treasurer's Office when we build this assumption in. We did not plan for a change in state shared revenue, so we are holding even with 2021 on that particular item. We did, we maintained the 3.9 mil tax levy. That's consistent with prior years, and that still includes the 0.3 mils committed to retirement funding. The January first salary and wage cost of living increase was 2% as outlined in the contracts that have been established. And also, this budget includes the implementation of the wage study that was presented to the board in July. Things that we're still watching, we're watching the state budget to make sure that gets adopted. There's a fair amount of funding from the state to the county, and we still are working on that capital project funding. So that's something that we'll continue to work on in the next few years. The 2022 budget continues the long history of Ottawa County levying less than the maximum millage allowed. The proposed budget is based on the 3.9 millage rate. This is 0.4358 mils less than the maximum authorized amount. That saves the taxpayers $6 million in fiscal year 22. The fiscal year 2022 budget, as I've broken it out by fund type here, the general fund is the county's operating budget, and the proposed appropriations are $97,706,929. That's funded by current revenues of $96.4 million and $1.2 million user reserves. The $1.2 million user reserves, that includes a million dollars. This is longstanding practice that we have appropriated a million dollars of fund balance to offset departments underspending at the end of the year. It allows the county to end where we planned on ending, as opposed to with a surplus, because departments generally underspend their budgets about 3% to 5%. The special revenue funds, that is the accounting term for restricted revenue funds. There are revenues that are restrictive for a specific purpose, such as the CMH millage, the Parks millage. There are 22 special revenue funds in the county, and the total appropriations for this is $117,761,754, funded with revenues and reserves that are specifically dedicated to the purpose of the fund. The debt service fund is where the county makes all of our debt service payments for outstanding bonds and is appropriated at $5,616,688. And then the capital improvement fund, which is at $9.89860,374. That million dollars user reserve, that is money that the board committed to capital projects. Last year, we committed, the board took action of 2.7 million of excess fund balance over the general fund policy to commit to capital projects. So the total county operating budget is $230,390,725. How that money, where that money comes from, is really our three main sources. The taxes for the county represent 34% of all revenues the county receives. The county receives, the largest revenue category is intergovernmental revenue at 46%. This is largely Medicaid resources funding CMH state revenue and grants and federal grants. The final, the third category is charges for services at 9%. How the money is spent, almost 50% of all money that the county received is spent on personnel, salary, wages, and benefits. And then the other main category is contractual services. Again, this is a direct complement to the federal revenue that's received by CMH and the contracted services in which they provide, not just CMH, many areas in the county. When you look at fiscal year 22 proposed budget versus the 2021 budget, if you back out the duplicating transfers of which funds are giving each other money to operate, the consolidated budget is $210,264,856. This is $19.1 million higher than the consolidated budget for fiscal year 21. What's really new or significantly, we've added additional funds to, is include a number of things. Existing staff increase in wage and benefits is greater than the 2% cost of living in contract steps, mostly because that number would generally float between 2 and 2.5 million. The 4.5 million includes the 28 CMH positions that were added during '21, so to support the new grant programs that CMH has received approval for. The new staff are detailed in your booklet on page 40 of the budget summary I distributed. But county-wide, the budget includes 16.314 new full-time equivalent positions. CMH grants, state general fund increases will increase payment to direct care workers and increase client care services. So the CMH increased, their budget increased approximately 4 million over prior years. Capital investment, I'm going to detail a little bit more on the next slide, but the budget includes an increase over the prior year of about $7.3 million. The capital investment in '22 budget is directly from the capital improvement plan approved by the board last month. Building and maintenance projects is ongoing maintenance at county facilities, including office renovations. The crime prevention through environmental design projects are recommendations from the sheriff's office and funded by the insurance authority. The case management software will replace an old AS400 software currently used by circuit court, district court, probation, and the prosecuting attorney's office. Team has been involved in a purchasing request for proposal process. And while no contracts have been finalized, this is an estimate of the replacement plan. The Parks Commission approved $5.7 million in projects funded by the Parks Millage, including three segments of the Adam Explorer Trail, Kirk Park Reconstruction, and Tunnel Park Deck and Stairway Reconstruction. The next steps are the public hearing. It will be today. And then next week, at the finance meeting, the Appropriations Act will be presented for consideration. And then 9:30 board agenda as well. And then 10:01, we'll start the new year with a new funding. The budget represents a county-wide planning effort and would not be possible without leadership of the Board of Commissioners, administration, and elected officials. A special thanks to the CIP review team, Department of Strategic Impact, and those in the Fiscal Services Department. Were there any questions regarding the budget?
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
The next thing on the agenda is public comment. Before we open it up for public comment, I just have a statement I'd like to make. I want to remind everyone wishing to offer public comment today that the state legislature by statute has vested authority in the Ottawa County Health Officer with the authority to issue the limited mask mandate that she has issued. The board has no authority to reverse her decision, fire her because she made it, or defund the Health Department because of a mandate. This is not only the opinion of corporate counsel, but also Kent County's corporate counsel and that of the largest law firm in West Michigan, which has independently reviewed the matter and concurred. Ottawa has also asked our legislators to seek an attorney general opinion, and we are seeking an opinion from former Attorney General Mike Cox as well. The courts can review the Ottawa Health Officer's decision, as could the Director of the State Department of Health and Human Resources, but not the Board of Commissioners. I also want you to understand why we have reduced the amount of time for each person wishing to speak as well, as limiting the number of people in the Fillmore lobby and conference room. As for the space limitations, there are two reasons for this. One is COVID. We cannot have people congregating inside without social distancing. Second, there was some bullying and heckling of certain people who spoke on one side of the masking issue last time. We cannot tolerate this at our meeting today. As to the reduction from two minutes to one, this will be the second time we've heard public comment on the limited mask mandate. public comment on the limited mask mandate in schools. The first took seven hours. Apparently, there were up to 1,000 citizens here last time, and most could not wait that long to speak. If we have 300 citizens who wish to speak even a minute each, this will likely take up to 10 hours if you assume a minute to speak and a minute of downtime between breaks. Also, we've heard hundreds of views on the matter, and at this point, we have likely heard every argument for and against the mandate. Thus compelling folks to summarize their argument and get right to the point serves everyone's interest and gives everyone a reasonable chance to weigh in. Finally, I wish to remind you to direct your comments to me, not to individuals that are on this board. And also do not expect to be asking questions and getting answers back. This is not a question and answer period. Rather, express your opinion civilly and succinctly, and then give someone else a chance to do the same thing. Thank you. This time, I'd like to ask the first person to come forward and give us their name. All right, we will start the clock as soon as you start speaking.
Commissioners, what you must understand is that you, Mr. Bergman, are incorrect when you say that the government needs to make decisions for us, or that the Health Department has absolute power to vaccinate our children, Mr. Van Essen, because God gave my children to me, not you. Therefore, your statements are fundamentally incorrect. Mr. Bergman, this is not threatening or bullying, as you have said in your last letter. Rather, this is a call to action. So I conclude by saying shame on you for meddling in affairs that are not your right and avoiding what is your duty reining in the Health Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
Okay, next we have Mick Bricker. Please state your name and your city and township, and you have one minute.
My name is Mick Bricker, and I am from Spring Lake Township. And I just wanted to address the board tonight, this afternoon, and say thank you for all you're doing. I know what you're doing is not an easy job, and I appreciate it. But I also want to thank the citizens for what they're doing. It's not easy for them either. I just wanted to let you know that I stand against all mandates, so whether they're from our governor, the lockdowns, the shutdowns that we had last year, or they're from our current president. So I think that what we're going through right now is a very healthy thing. I truly believe that this is what our founders visualized when our nation was initially set up, and I think that we will get to consensus on this. I have to commend you as well that we--
Who's next?
Christine Timmer. Please state your name, your city or township, and you have one minute.
Thank you. My name is Kristen Timmer. I'm from Georgetown Township, and I came here today to say thank you for serving as county commissioners. Thank you for implementing changes to the public comment process to help ensure everyone's safety. Thank you for following the rule of law. Sure, it's not easy in such a polarized climate, and where as a community, we do not agree on basic facts or sources of credible information. I want my community to be one where thoughtful dialogue and learning can occur. I want it to be a place where expertise is valued and respected, where people can ask questions of and get answers from those in authority, where we assume integrity of our community members and leadership unless we have concrete reasons to think otherwise, and where we recognize the limitations of research we may individually conduct in giving us a complete and balanced perspective. Likewise, I hope that the experts from our community will continue to coordinate with each other to make their decisions. Thank you again for your service.
You have commenter number four, please. Please state your name, your city or township, and you have one minute.
My name is Lynn. I'm in Chester. I just paid my bill of $25,000 in taxes, and now I know why my money is being wasted. You guys are laying down to the Health Department, you're laying down to the education system, all of it. You're making those kids mask up for no good reason. COVID is a garbage. You have all of these things going on. You don't care about your citizens. You have absolutely no respect. You want us to respect you, but you do not respect any of us. We can go on and on and on, and you're still going to sit there all in a little circle and ignore everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next presenter will be Joe Moss. Please state your name, your city, township, and you have one minute.
Commissioners, my name is Joe Moss. I live in Hudsonville. I come with a message from the people. You've heard it before. We want our freedom back. We want you to act. Republican leaders around the state and the country, bold leaders, have taken action and spoken out to resist dictatorial mandates from local, state, and federal government. They are bold in coming together and uniting outspokenly against these things. So my encouragement to you is to be strong and courageous. Do not fear. You men are the people's first line of defense. You have heard from the people. Admitting there was 1,000 people is a start. Please speak for all--
It's the five.
--you represent.
All right, next thing on our agenda is approval of agenda. Could I get a motion, please?
Moved.
Moved and supported. Comments or questions? Would you call a roll, please?
For Kyers?
Yes.
Mr. Hope floor?
Yes.
Mr. Methalink?
Yes.
Mr. Zalstra?
Yes.
Mr. Fenske?
Yes.
Mr. Danenberg?
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung?
Yes.
Mr. Bergman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next thing is actions and reports, consent resolutions. Mr. Fenske.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to make the motion to approve consent resolutions 1 through 4.
Support.
Moved and supported. Comments or questions? Jerry, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Fenske?
Yes.
Mr. Zalstra?
Yes.
Mr. Kyers?
Yes.
Mr. Hope floor?
Yes.
Mr. Baumann?
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung?
Yes.
Mr. Methalink?
Yes.
Mr. Danenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Bergman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next thing on the public hearings, Ottawa County budget. Mr. Hope floor?
Chairman, suggested motion is to open the public hearing to receive comments on the FY 2022 Ottawa County budget.
Support. Moved and supported. Are there any public comments? Were there any public comments that you received? Any correspondence?
No.
Okay, all right, all right. Hearing none. Would you--
Make a motion to close the public hearing on FY 2020.
Excuse me. Can I get a vote on the first, the opening of--
Oh, yeah, okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Zalstra?
Yes.
Mr. Fenske?
Yes.
Mr. Baumann?
Yes.
Mr. Kyers?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Danenberg?
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung?
Yes.
Mr. Hope floor?
Yes.
Mr. Bergman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, Mr. Hope floor.
Sir.
You ready? Okay. Close the public hearing, make a motion to close the public hearing on FY 2020 Ottawa County budget.
Support. Comments or questions? Jerry, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Baumann?
Yes.
Mr. Methalink?
Yes.
Mr. Hope floor?
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung?
Yes.
Mr. Zalstra?
Yes.
Mr. Kyers?
Yes.
Mr. Danenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Fenske?
Yes.
Mr. Bergman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next thing is closeout of the CARES Community Development Block Grant. Mr. Kyers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Closeout of the CARES Community Development Block Grant, and the motion is to open the public hearing to receive comments to closeout of the CARES Community Development Block Grant.
Supported. Moved and supported. Comments or questions? Jerry, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Hope floor?
Yes.
Mr. Zalstra?
Yes.
Mr. Kyers?
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung?
Yes.
Mr. Methalink?
Yes.
Mr. Baumann?
Yes.
Mr. Fenske?
Yes.
Mr. Danenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Bergman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That would like to speak to the CARES Development, Community Development Block Grant.
John, can you refresh us on this, man?
Yeah, actually, I was going to have Karen give you some specifics on the grant we received to cover certain--
Okay.
--COVID-related expenses.
This is a closeout of it, so it's the finishing.
The closeout of a grant that the county received approximately in late summer, we were notified of an opportunity to receive a $431,207 grant. There was a public hearing held in November 2020 to open the grant process. We have since used that funding for salaries in fringe for testing and contact tracing. We've used it to purchase PPE for law enforcement, long-term care facilities, and first responders. We have also collaborated with some local nonprofit groups to provide food for the underprivileged, and there has, we purchased a vaccine freezer to store COVID vaccine and spent, and have been reimbursed for the $431,207. This public hearing is to hear comment on that and to close out the grant.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else to add to that, John? And no public comment? So, Mr. Kyers, would you--
We roll call on that already, Jerry did?
Yes, the first--
Close the public hearing and a closeout of the CARES Community Development Block Grant.
Moved and supported. Comments or questions? Jerry, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Kyers?
Yes.
Mr. Hope floor?
Yes.
Mr. Danenberg?
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung?
Yes.
Mr. Zalstra?
Yes.
Mr. Methalink?
Yes.
Mr. Baumann?
Yes.
Mr. Fenske?
Yes.
Mr. Bergman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Action items, there are none. Appointments, Mr. Zalstra?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to place into nomination the name of Terry Goldberg just to fill one family member vacancy beginning immediately and ending March 31, 2024.
Supported. Moved and supported. Comments or questions? Jerry, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fenske?
Yes.
Mr. Zalstra?
Yes.
Mr. Danenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Methalink?
Yes.
Mr. Hope floor?
Yes.
Mr. Baumann?
Yes.
Mr. Kyers?
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung?
Yes.
Mr. Bergman?
Yes.
Motion--
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to place into nomination the name of Ron Franz to fill member vacancy beginning immediately and ending December 31, 2021.
Questions? Jerry, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Danenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Baumann?
Yes.
Mr. Fenske?
Yes.
Mr. Methalink?
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung?
Yes.
Mr. Hope floor?
Yes.
Mr. Zalstra?
Yes.
Mr. Kyers?
Yes.
Mr. Bergman?
Yes.
Thank you. Discussion items, none. Report of the county administrator.
Just real brief, as you mentioned, we're getting additional legal opinions to, related to the county board's ability or inability to override a public health officer's decision on issuing an order. We're wrapping up some big facilities projects. The $1.7 million project to replace the entire HVAC system at the Hudsonville facility is substantially done, so the days of excessive humidity in that building should be over. And we're finding out with a bunch of our facilities-related projects, IT-related projects, the supply chain issues have become really problematic in terms of getting materials in for a variety of different projects, and it's caused complications in terms of trying to finish projects on time, and then vendors only honoring their estimates for, say, 30 days or so because the prices are so volatile. So we're working through that, and I know that HR and we, the board chair, and Gov and Human Resources are working with Gov HR to start the selection process for the new county administrator. So that's what's going on so far. Thank you.
Any questions for John? You feel like you're on level ground so far?
Yep, no, you know, you got, the county has great employees, great leadership staff here, so we've got wonderful elected officials, department heads, court staff, so that makes it a heck of a lot easier. So, so far, so good.
Go to a facilitator administrator, John?
Well, with, for Facilities Department, so we did appoint Blake as our interim Facilities Director, and he and I have had a preliminary conversation about if we want to make any type of organizational changes to the Facilities Department, and whether or not those changes would entail hiring a building and ground supervisor, or whether it would be better to look at some of the shortfalls we have in terms of skill sets, in terms of the type of maintenance people that we would hire that may have some skills that we could seek. So, right now, you know, Blake will be the interim Facilities Director for the foreseeable future, and if that works out, that may become something that may become permanent, whether or not we then fill that building and ground supervisor, something he and I want to have a discussion about as that's the best use, or are there other people that we would want to hire, maintenance-type people, carpentry skills, that type of thing, that may be of a better use than a supervisory position? So we're still thinking those through. He's been here, oh, through three, three and a half months, so, you know, we're getting now past the initial impressions where he kind of knows what's going on, and we're going to be having some in-depth conversations as to how we want to move that department forward.
Thanks. Anyone else? If not, general information, comments, and meetings attended. Anyone?
Mr. Chairman. I see Kevin is here. I would like to publicly thank him for all his hard work as Circuit Court Administrator and congratulate him on his upcoming retirement, and we wish you all the best. So I know it's not for a little while yet, but I just wanted to take the opportunity, I saw you sitting there, I just wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you.
Thank you very much. It's been a great ride.
I think we could all echo that.
Definitely.
Kittingly, I was going to say that he could certainly come up, but we know from experience that when he comes up, he can tend to--
Where's the microphone?
He can tend to take a little bit of time at the microphone, so, anyway, it's, yeah, I agree that you've done a wonderful job for our county, and we will really miss you, but we're not ready to let you go yet, so--
January 14.
Okay, so you can have a swan song before that, right? Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Wanted to take this opportunity to invite fellow commissioners and county staff and those that are listening on YouTube to an event that's coming up on the 30th of September, Farmland Preservation. I know that our board meeting is going to be moved to that Thursday, and you might want an opportunity to, you know, work with some of the attendees and sponsors. Last year, we raised over $19,000 to help stem the loss of precious farmland. We are the fastest-growing county in the state of Michigan, but we're also losing one of our top commodities, and that's our dirt, our farmland. So please consider September 30 as a time from 6 to 8. You can do online, or you can attend in person, but it's always been a real nice opportunity. It's going to be at the Terra Square in Hudsonville, so just a reminder to all. Thank you.
Good. Anyone else?
We had, we had the Parks Foundation breakfast and lunch, and me and Greg and Jim were there, and it was a great turnout. It was really a good thing when you see people come and support the parks, you know, and what the foundation's doing to keep the parks, the projects they're going through. So a big thank you to the parks and the foundation that they put on at--
Sure. Anyone else? I just have a couple of comments. First of all, I was able to represent the board on Saturday night at the groundbreaking for the observatory at Hemlock Crossing. Wow, that's gonna be, that's gonna be a real prize for Ottawa County and for our parks. You know, when you envision an observatory, you think of, you know, these big observatories and think, how can that be in Ottawa County? But we are gonna have an observatory. We're gonna have a nice one, a good-sized one. And I'm looking forward to going and looking at the stars and bringing my grandkids and and others to see it as well. It won't be finished until probably around May because it'll take a little while and they have to order some of the parts. So, it'll be a real win-win for the parks. So, and I also want to remind the board that our next meeting is on the 30th because of our conference that we're going to. And that meeting will be after our parks tour that day. So, hopefully, you all will be able to be part of that parks tour that's in the morning. I don't remember when it starts, but I'm sure that Stephanie and Regina will keep us posted as to when that starts. All right, the next thing is public comment. And I believe that we will be taking some new people in and these people will be asked to leave. Who is going to bring the new ones up?
Right outside, they're gonna, they're gonna bring them in.
Do you have a list?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
That's that?
Go ahead.
Okay, our first one will be Donna Ratman. Please say your name and city or township, and you have one minute.
All right, thank you. Donna Ratman, James Sound Township. Knock, knock. No, this is not a joke. These are the people wanting to talk to you out there, but you won't let them in. And they want to be heard, they want to be listened to. Obviously, you don't care to listen or to hear by your actions from last meeting and this meeting and the decision to make them stay out there. Now, you don't want to answer the call to anybody's knock to be heard. It's obvious you don't want to talk to anybody. And if you don't want to engage with the people who elected you, why be here? Why not resign? It would save us all a lot of trouble and money. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
Okay, our next one, Sylvia Rhodey. Please state your name, city or township, and you have one minute.
Hi, my name is Sylvia Rhodey, and I am from Allendale. These are not ordinary times. We thank you for your work in ordinary times, for being fiscally responsible, but not for joining a progressive alliance with Seattle, Portland, and Minneapolis. Not for creating a DEI office influencing our county with divisive critical race theory. And in these extraordinary times, after months of advocacy from parents, we cannot thank you for listening to us, for hearing us, for protecting our children from devastating health orders. Your lack of courage, moral compass, and protective constitutional leadership is glaringly apparent. You have clearly demonstrated you do not care and you will not act on behalf of the people. If you do not step in to protect our littlest ones who are not at risk of COVID, is there anything you would ever stand against? So, we pray God will soften your hearts and raise up new leaders among us while we work to unseat you.
Next person is Carol Van Der Sweg. Please state your name and city or township, and you have one minute.
Yesterday, I received an email from one of you saying it's not me, it's the Health Department. But now, my question is, have you stood up to them and asked them why they are doing this? If you don't support us, you're against us. But I feel you represent us. Police here in the building have no masks. There's only one of you with a mask on here. You can have a stadium with 1,000 people in it unmasked, but you're allowing our precious children to be masked. There's a lot of emotional harm to them. Have you asked why? If you don't stand for us, you're fighting against us.
Our next speaker is Joel Studabaker. Please state your name, city, township, and you have one minute.
Hello, Joel Studabaker, Hudsonville. There was an email that went out from your legal counsel that stated that the Health Department has the right to issue a vaccine mandate, but they won't. That's really shaky grounds. I'm sorry, that's not good. Furthermore, the GOP issued a resolution to all of you that they do not have that. And why would that be? Let's think about it. So, if there is a health crisis, what's the definition? What's the legal definition of a pandemic with numbers? What are the parameters? What's the percentages? How many people have to be dying? How many people have to be hospitalized? How many cases do there have to be for it actually, actually to be defined as a pandemic? You won't have an answer because it doesn't exist. It is completely generic in the law, which means they have no legal parameters to operate on, which means they shouldn't be issuing anything. They have no right to issue anything because they can't define anything. And as you know, the law starts with the definition of words. Thank you.
Our next is Dawn Bremals. Please state your name and city or township, and you have one minute.
Hi, I'm Dawn, I'm from Allendale. I stand united with a lot of the people here and outside and in the conference room. We just want our freedom back. We want freedom restored. We want you to hold the Health Department accountable. We know that things have just gone unchecked. We see what's happening at Grand Valley. I have a daughter who had a full ride scholarship at Grand Valley, told she's required to get the vaccine if she wants to attend school. She saw, and I saw, the Grand Valley football game shoulder to shoulder, over 11,000 people. You can't tell me this isn't political. We know this is political. And we're asking each one of you to bravely, please, courageously, if you have your power, which we believe you do, to please use it for the good of the people that you represent. Thank you.
Next is Ryan Kelly. Please state your name, city or township, and you have one minute.
Ryan Kelly, Allendale, Michigan, candidate for Michigan Governor. Joe Biden recently stated that this is no longer about freedom and personal choice. America is all about freedom and personal choice. You guys have the opportunity here to do what's right in this battle of right versus wrong. You have the authority. The Health Director needs to be fired because they're violating the Constitution. You guys have the ability to do that. It's time that you stand strong. America is land of the free and home of the brave, not land of the scared and easily manipulated. You are being threatened by them. They are trying to tell you what to do, and you guys run the show here. You have the authority to do what's right, and you know what's right. And so, we are all here to encourage you to do what's right because people like Joe Biden say that it's no longer about freedom and personal choice. We're gonna show them what freedom and personal choice is all about. We're asking you to stand with us. God bless you all.
This is Justine Baukamp. Please state your name, city or township, and you have one minute.
Hi, my name is Justine Baukamp. Thank you for your time. I would not want any of your jobs. The amazing men and women, the amazing men and women in uniform, you gentlemen who I voted for to uphold my freedoms have always been a beacon of justice, a safe haven. I respect and admire you all. I have always known that this building and all that is within it stood, stood for that. I could come to this public building as a law-abiding citizen, and you were all here for me. That access was restricted a little bit today, and that was a scary feeling that I hope to never feel again. I respectfully don't plead that that is right. Thank you for the future access that I hope to maintain with you all, for your time, your service to our freedom. And by the way, I am parent for medical freedom.
This is Margaret. Please state your name, city or township, and you have one minute.
My name is Margaret, I'm from Jenison. And I ask all believers, please bow your head and pray with me. Dear God, we thank you that you hold the victory over sin and death in this world. We thank you for freedom and the hope you bring. Your word says to stand our ground, and that's what we will do in the power of your name. We know that we do not fight alone, for you are constantly at work on behalf of your children, shielding, protecting, strengthening, exposing deeds of darkness, bringing to light what needs to be known, covering us from the cruel attacks we face even when we're unaware. We ask that you would give us wisdom and discernment to recognize the schemes of the enemy in our lives and to stand strong against his work. We ask that you would remind us to pray constantly for all believers. We ask that you would help us to stay alert in a dark world that tries hard to make things look not so bad. We ask that you help us to remember to put your armor on daily, for you give us all that we need to stand firm in this day. We thank you that though you remind us in your word that the whole world lies under the power of the evil one, that you are still far greater and we have overcome because you have set us free. We love you, Lord, we need you, we stand together in your great and powerful name and Jesus' name. Amen.
Our next one is Ryan. Ryan, please state your name, city or township, and you have one minute.
Hey, Ryan, Oysaki Park Township. First, let me say that I'm a father to four and six-year-old boys, and I'm here because of them. I believe that the Health Department has completely overstepped, and we have, as parents, have the right to make health choices for our children and evaluate the risks thereof. It was up to all of you to put your foot down and fire the director. Doug Van Essen said it himself, and I quote, "I conclude that the Board of Commissioners generally has the power to terminate the health officer." It's right off their website. You all need to wake up. You, as a collective board, have failed at listening to your constituents. I'm a resident of Park Township and therefore within District One. I called Frank Garcia weekly, left messages with my name, text messages with my name. He finally responded on Tuesday, August 31, as I was tucking my six-year-old into bed after 7:00 PM. Instead of reading my texts or listening to my voicemails, which asked for civilized conversation, he angrily asked who I was, which he would already know if he had read anything or listened. He has since blocked my number. Well, here I am, Frank, and you're not here.
Thank you. Next is Donna. Donna, please state your name, city or township, and you have one minute.
My name is Donna Mooney, and I know all of you have heard from me before. The only thing that I want to say to you is thank you. Thank you for exposing what you really are to all these people here, the thousand people that were here last time. Like many others, I've called, I've written. You, Roger Bergman, you, I am sick of listening to your disrespect, your disregard, your contempt for the people who elected you, all of you. And we've all gotten to see it. So, guess what? I want you to know that I will do my darndest to volunteer, to campaign, to work behind the scenes, to make sure every single one of you is replaced with someone who represents the people. Furthermore, as the state moves Afghani refugees into our state, you still mask up our children. I will not comply.
Who's next?
That was, it's time to rotate again, please.
All right. Thank you.
One angry lady.
Our first one will be Paul. Paul, please list your, state your name and city or township, and you have one minute.
Okay, Hudsonville, Michigan. Thomas Payne said, "Society and every state is a blessing, but government in its best state is but a necessary evil, and its worst state, an intolerable one." There's a clear overreach by the Ottawa County Health Department with the mask mandate. It's like calling the SWAT team for a speeding violation. They need to have, they need to have the reins brought in for, on their lust for power. We, the people, demand it. Ronald Reagan once said, "The most terrifying words in the English language are, 'I'm from the government and I'm here to help.'" I ask people to go to the OttawaPreCall.com and sign the petition to recall these commissioners who refuse to listen to our constituents and their request to rein in the Ottawa County Health Department. No part of the government can tell us what's best for our children, none. After we free our children from this child abuse, we can start deep diving into election integrity of the 2020 election. According to the 2020 election report by Seth Kachel, Ottawa County is one of the highest voter fraud counties suspected. Look for groups that are doing canvassing in Ottawa County.
Our next speaker is Katrina. Please state your name, city or township, and you have one minute. Sorry if I pronounced that wrong.
No, you didn't. Katrina Stetson, Michigan. Thank you for taking time here and allowing us to speak. However, very disappointed that it's only one minute because you're giving me one minute to explain how COVID mandates and restrictions contributed to my son's pre-suicide attempts last year and for my other son's special needs and learning to struggles and my other daughter having to choose between social isolation and wearing a mask that has not been good for her either. I could add to this or other friends or my nieces and nephews' stories that are very young or ad science that everyone disagrees on or my experiences in the hospital. However, I was not answered last time via Zoom on why didn't you ask the Health Department why they aren't listening to also other organizations that suggest that you should also consider psychosocial needs for kids 7 and under and not even masked kids 5 and under? You say you can't do anything. If not you, then who? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Liz. Liz, please state your name, city or township, and you have one minute. Liz?
Liz Ramey, Allendale, Michigan. Three weeks ago, you had hundreds of parents show up. Parents who poured their hearts out to you cried, pleaded that their kids are being negatively impacted by these mandates and many who even prayed for you. Afterwards, many parents emailed stating that they don't condone the few that acted out of line and acknowledging your job was tough and it was a hard day, thanking those that voted in line with their constituents and asked those that didn't to reconsider. The statements made to the media are appalling. You completely dismissed every parent that was present in one statement and then went further to change the rules and dissuade people from coming. Interesting that you use your power in an attempt to keep people away from the meetings, but not for the return of parental rights. The actions of this board are shameful. I stand here yet again, calling on you to relieve the Health Department of their administrative officer and hire someone that values the citizens of this county. 90,000 students were studied last year in this country, and no statistical significance was found in viral transmission of those masks versus not. Remember, the only thing necessary for the triumph of evil is for good men to do nothing.
Next speaker is Sarah. Sarah, please state your name, city or township, and you have one minute.
Hi, Sarah Westes from Hudsonville. All along, I kept hearing, "There's nothing you can do, nothing you can do. Our hands are tied. You lied to us because you can do something. You can fire the Health Director and hire a Health Director that correlates with what the people want. The majority of what the people want are here." I hear, oh, I've heard other emails and from other parents. I don't see one of them ever here that are for masks, ever. So, why don't you do what the parents want? Are you really listening? I have such righteous anger right now because God wants you to do the right thing. And you're not doing the right thing. Roger, you sit there like you have authority. You lied. You lied on your interview too last night. Heckle? They weren't heckled, that's freedom of speech, isn't it? They were singing Amazing Grace. And you call it heckle?
Our next speaker is Chris. Chris, please state your name, city or township, and you have one minute.
Chris Budkus, Grandkids in Allendale. Once again, it's very upsetting that you have restricted the public at your public meetings by shortening our speeches to one minute only, hurting us in and out like cattle or putting us in a back room so that you don't have to see us or hear us. You're probably thinking, "I didn't sign up for this." Well, we didn't plan on having our children and grandchildren abused with these mandates. We all know you hired the Health Director, and you can fire this person and put a person in place that has our best interests at heart. If you don't like all this commotion, I can tell you, there are other things we're not happy about either, so this is going, not going to end soon. You can resign now, and we'll do our best to put in some strong conservative commissioners. You certainly have shown that you won't help us in any way, so the only real answer is to start recalling most of you.
Our next speaker is Lindsay. Lindsay, please state your name, city or township, and you have one minute.
Lindsay Young Zealand. I recognize that retroactively rescinding a mandate is proving to feel insurmountable. While I still believe the mask mandate to be government overreach and intimidation as well as ineffective and harmful, instead, I ask you, our elected officials, to be proactive about the future. Our government was formed by the people, for the people, with a system of checks and balances in place. balances in place to safeguard against tyranny, and make no mistake, that is up, what we are up against. We are on the precipice. So before the next mandate comes, and it will, I ask you to find a way to exercise your authority and ensure we don't find our rights stripped again. We cannot continue to give rope when freedom is on the line. We will soon find ourselves tightly bound. We only look at what is happening in other nations to see the writing on the wall. Good men become a part of the regime when they don't believe in resistance. I am asking you to courageously use the position you have played, been placed in. Stand firm and hold the line. Fight with us. Let freedom be your legacy. Thank you.
Next speaker is Lisa. Lisa, please state your name, city or township, and you have one minute.
Township, I would like to ask that the health order masking children be rescinded, and no further orders be issued affecting our children. We request that you, as the county commissioners, immediately replace the health officer. If you have the legal authority to appoint the health officer, and by statute you do, you also have the legal authority to unappoint and replace the health officer with an individual in agreement with a direction to rescind the order. This was addressed by a few of our representatives and also exemplified by communications in Jackson County in MCL 333 dot two four two eight. We ask that you, as our elected county commissioners, to immediately replace Doug Van Essen, who has not been acting on behalf of we, the people. We would love to partner with you and find a middle ground. Unfortunately, I don't see where compromise can happen in a mandate that interferes with our kids' ability to breathe, compromising their immune system and potentially affecting their overall physical, emotional, mental well-being. It's time for leadership to act with courage and stand up and do the right thing. God has called you for such a time as this. How will you take action to protect our kids?
Our next speaker is Harvey. Harvey, please state your name, city or township, and you have one minute.
I'm Harvey. I live in Jenison. You say there's nothing you can do to block the unlawful, unconstitutional mask mandate of the Ottawa County Health Department, but there is. For instance, demand that they follow the science and OSHA regulations that mitigate of airborne pathogens, which means no masks. Demand that a $2.2 million grant you approved last meeting, they use to install I-Wave ionization systems to kill the airborne viruses in all school buildings, instead of hiring mask nazis to patrol the schools. Investigate why religious exemptions for wearing a mask are not allowed. Investigate why pediatricians are being threatened with the loss of their license if they give a medical exemption for wearing a mask, even for asthma. Ask why they claim that the vaccine is safe and effective when the CDC cites 14,506 deaths after the shot. This issue is not about masks, it's about choice and parental rights. We are fighting for our God-given rights to make our own choices with respect to health. Parents have the right to decide what is best for the child, not the state.
Our next person is Audrey. Audrey, please state your name, city or township, and you have one moment, one minute.
I'm Audrey Biker in Holland Township. I just want to read to you an email that I sent to Lisa and never received a reply on, sadly. I'm Audrey Biker, a local certified K-12 educator, board-certified health and wellness coach, nutritionist, Ottawa food volunteer. I've been volunteering for Ottawa food since I moved my coaching business from Grand Rapids to Holland in 2018, after being in business for three years. It's been a wonderful experience to dive deep into my passion for health and wellness for our residents and their children by collaborating with the staff, leaders, and local volunteers. We have spent countless hours brainstorming, volunteering in person, with my young daughter translating, implementing and launching new campaigns and programs, including the creation and recording of cooking videos for Ottawa food. We have done this all because our purpose on this earth isn't to prove the quality of life and therefore health outcomes of as many people as possible through compassion, empathy, education, and empowerment. It's recently come to my attention, you are the decision-maker enforcer for the current mandates for PK through sixth grade.
Our next speaker is Laney. Please state your name, city or township, and you have one minute.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Laney Monera, Allendale. Mr. Bergman, yesterday you said we cannot legally do anything, we can't change that law. Respectfully, you don't have to change any law, you have to exercise the authority that you have under the current law. Now, I understand you sought different legal opinions, but that doesn't change the fact that under Michigan statute, this board is still the governing entity of the Health Department, and this board can appoint the health officer and unappointed. If you refuse to unappoint the current health officer, there's something else you can do. MCLA 46.11 subsection K is entitled Powers of County Board of Commissioners. It says, "The board can require a county officer whose salary is paid by the county to make a report under oath to this board on any subject connected with the duties of that office." Lisa Stefanowski is a county health officer paid by this county. The mask mandate is premised on the Michigan statute that an imminent danger exists. How about this board require her to make a report under that statute? Thank you.
That's the end of this session, so if you want to vacate the room, please.
Okay, our first speaker will be Mitch Disalcone. Please state your name, city or township, and you have one minute.
He can go in my place. He's the one who has to wear a mask, not me. My name is Mitch, I'm from Park Township. How is it that this body of duly elected officials does not allow for motions and resolutions as a regular course of business? The level of public, public trust in this body keeps getting lower and lower. As a group, you've had over three weeks to fulfill your duty to the people, but you continue to fail. You sit on your hands and allow fascism to take hold in our county, state, and country. You must remember that the power in this county, country belongs to the people, not to the government. Therefore, our disobedience is our right and obligation. Now is your opportunity to be bold and stand on the right side of history, just as the heroes we have celebrated for the last 245 years. If you do nothing, you will be remembered as failures. We will replace you with leaders of courage who will do their job and protect the inalienable rights of the people, all people of the United States of America. By the way, your microphones are still hot in between transitions, and we can hear all the comments that you're making about us in the interim. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Krista Yetski. Please state your name, city or township, and you have one minute.
Krista Yetski, Allendale. You say there's nothing you can legally do with the Health Department. Michigan State Rep Steve Johnson says that's not true. Paraphrasing him, commissioners are punting on their duty to remove the absurd mask mandate. They are claiming that they cannot do anything about this, and that state legislator must change the law. That is patently false, and they should know better. There are several legal issues at play. First, the board is correct in that they cannot overturn the mask mandate by vote. Commissioners would like to think that's the end of the story, and that there's nothing they can do. Well, that's not exactly the truth. The board has the power to fire the health director. That is their check on her power. If the board claims they do not have this authority, they are flat-out dead wrong. The health director is an appointed position, and that's an important distinction that the courts have made. The authority to remove health officers persists, no matter what the contracts say. It's time for you to fire our health director, appoint someone who will stand up for parental rights, and also fire and replace your legal counsel.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Angie Yetski. Please state your name, city or township, and you have one minute.
Angie Yetski, Jenison. On September 10, Ottawa County reported 66.2% of inpatient beds were occupied over the last 21 days. 6% were COVID patients. Average age of those patients, 67. The U.S. tracks children who have died while testing positive for COVID, not children who have died of COVID. Again, children have a 99.997% recovery rate from COVID. Cloth and paper masks do not work against the spread of virus. The CDC said it in 2015. Dr. Fauci has said it on and off over the last year and a half. This is not an issue of morality, it's an issue of science. The immune compromised and those fearful need to be in N95 masks. The panic caused by our Health Department is unnecessary, misinformed, and divisive. Thank you for Kyle Turpstra for standing up.
Okay, our next speaker is Whitney. Please state your name, city or township, and you have one minute.
My name is Whitney Chuddy. I'm from Jenison in Georgetown Township, and I want to ask you guys to just overstep everything that's been going on with the health director. My oldest son has a lot of health concerns, mental health concerns, and he has continued to be masked. He has PTSD from a lot of abuse, he has asthma, he has a lot of different issues. We've been debating on pulling him out and homeschooling, but we have some major concerns, honestly, about suicide. So I feel that I'm, that the people who have made decisions for the school are putting his generation at risk for poor mental health. He has all the indicators from a lot of trauma growing up, and he's been told that if he performs well, he can earn a mask break at school, so he can earn some air, but he is really upset about that. I have not been able to get him a mask note, because my doctor said that he would lose his license, but he has all the reasons. He has really bad asthma, a lot of different things, but I personally don't think it should just be my son that should not have to earn air. I think that all kids should just have air.
Our next speaker is Emily Underhill. Please state your name, city or township, and you have one minute. Emily Underhill.
Emily Underhill, Allendale. Last time I spoke, I promised we were going to recall, and we are. OttawaPreCall.com. State Rep Johnson stated three days, three days ago, referring to Alligan County, quote, "It's abundantly clear that the board has the full authority to remove the health director. Any comments trying to say otherwise are just not true. I need to be clear, just because the board removes the health director does not mean that the mask mandates on kids goes away. A health order stays until a health director appeals it. The solution here is very simple. All the board needs to do is appoint someone that supports the parents of Alligan County and will remove this mandate on day one. Don't let the board get away with shirking their responsibilities and trying to pass the buck on to someone else. Michigan law and legal decisions are very clear that the board has the authority to remove the health director and appoint one that conforms with Alligan County values. Just as Governor Whitmer fired her health director, Robert Gordon, so too should the Alligan County Board of Commissioners fire the county health director and appoint someone that will stand up for parental rights," end quote. You guys have the power. Thank you for showing your true colors, so we can replace you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Philip. Please state your name, city or township, and you have one minute.
Hello, I'm Phil Merrill, and I have three little kids at Allendale Christian. What will it take for you to stand up? Here's where this is going. We're being conditioned to wear a mask despite all science telling us that it's nonsense. We're also being conditioned to test for diseases in which we express no symptoms. Increased testing is coming due to your empowering the Health Department. These PCR tests are demonstrated to give many false positives and can be tailored to the desired result. Soon, we'll be testing kids as a requirement of entry. Soon, there will be some positive tests and resulting voluntary quarantining. Soon, someone will realize that the quarantine is a fraud. Soon, the Health Department that you have empowered will take someone's child to a safe place so that they can quarantine. Soon, entire families will be taken to safe places to make sure that they don't infect others. Soon, if you're not vaxxed on the correct schedule, you'll be barred from entry to your favorite place. Soon, someone will take, be taken to a safe place because they are deemed dangerous because of their medical decisions. Soon, you'll be taken to a safe place. When will you step up? When it all happens, it'll be too late, and you'll regret that you didn't.
Our next speaker is Christie Lacy. Please state your name, city or township, and you have one moment, one minute.
Hi, I'm Christie Lacy from Zealand, and many say I don't do politics and stay quiet. I was that person, but very quickly learned that politics was doing me. So today, I speak out, and I let my voice be heard. The, the issue here has nothing to do with masks or vaccines, it has to do with freedom, and that's what's under attack. Each and every one of us better stand up and speak out for our freedoms, or we're not going to have any left. As human beings, we have God-given rights, and we, as Americans, have the Constitution to protect those rights. It's not the government's job to protect my health. The government's job is to protect my rights. It's my job to protect my health, and if we trade liberty for safety, we are going to lose both. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Chris Smith. Please state your name, city or township, and you have one minute.
I'm from Holland. Here, there are at least two sides to every situation. We all choose one or the other, but as commissioners, it's your job to not only hear, but consider both sides as valid. Make good faith efforts to create a win-win scenario as a resolution. We currently have a win-lose, which is why we're all here. We're not being unreasonable. None of us are asking people to stop wearing masks, or take a vaccine, or do anything. We're simply asking you to stand up for our freedom, our choice. That's why you were elected, was to represent us, in case you've forgotten. Forcing students to mask up not only violates the Constitution, but puts the schools in the position that they were never meant to be in. Forcing the least likely group to contact, to contract COVID in the first place to wear masks doesn't make sense, and I question the ability of the person mandating that. If they can't use critical thinking skills and rational common sense when making these decisions, their ability to fulfill their job requirements becomes suspect. This mandate needs to be rescinded or removed, the person making them.
Next is Brenda. Brenda, please state your name, city or township, and you have one minute.
My name is Brenda. I am a healthcare administrator and a med tech, and the greatest danger to America's freedom is a government that, that just ignores the Constitution, which was written in a time of crisis. There is no test for the Delta. According to Kent County Health Department, they are all to be assumed. There is no test. Of course, we get a new flu every year. Suicides, mental health, you guys go to Wedgwood, Pine Rest, and see the young kids, as young as five, being put on antidepressant anxiety meds? Go take a tour! It's disgusting, disgusting! I cannot believe the freedoms of our own, you guys are taking away our freedoms for your own self-righteousness. What is going on? Wake up! This is political. It is political. I'm sick of the clot shots, the jab-stabs, my residents dying because of being forced to take shots that are killing them, and watching kids, five years old and up, and I'm looking at you guys, most of your kids are probably older. Go visit Wedgwood and Pine Rest.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Shelby. Shelby, please state your name, city or township, and you have one minute.
I'm Shelby Visser. I live in Ottawa Township, or Olive Township. After the last meeting, I read this statement you guys released, you mentioned you didn't appreciate being bullied and threatened with your job. I understand that. I do have a job, and when I mess up, I hate being told to correct my behavior or face disciplinary action, but it's happened before, and right now, it's happening for you guys. This is all that's going to happen. It's a performance of you. We don't like your actions, and so now you're facing disciplinary action. This is your warning shot. Shape up, do what your constituents are asking, or face a recall. Thank you.
Okay, it's time to rotate.
You're asked to vacate the room at this time and bring the next ten in.
Okay, our first speaker will be Barbara Van Dyk. Please state your name, city or township, and you have one minute.
Barbara Van Dyk, Park Township. Regarding the mandatory mask mandates, I would like to respectfully request that you respect, uphold, and support the wishes of the public which you serve. I am an advocate for freedom. Each person has the right to choose. It's not my business or anyone else's whether an individual chooses to wear a mask or not. That is a personal decision. I will advocate for the right of each and every individual to make that personal decision either way. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tish. Tish, please state your name, city or township, and you have one minute.
Christian, Grand Haven Township. Okay, one minute. You've already stated you've heard it all, you're not going to change your minds, you can't do anything. There's one thing I believe every one of you can do. There is one thing I believe every one of you can do. You can stand for righteousness. I think I told you guys this two weeks ago. But I realize that many of you do not see this as purely evil. And it's sad and it's obvious that you don't see that. As a born again Christian, this evil is so clear. It's so clear. And I believe that if the majority of you or every one of you were in the same boat and you put your faith and trust in the Lord Jesus Christ, personal Lord and Savior, I think you would too clearly see this evil. And it would not be hard for you. So I implore every one of you to consider that. Humble yourselves, ask for forgiveness of your sins. He died on the cross for you. Accept that free gift. Accept that free gift. And make Him Lord of your life. Because I think if you were to do that, these decisions would be so you'd see it so clear. Your boss would be your heavenly father, and it would not be an earthly tyrant or whoever is directing the things you do. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alicia. Please state your name, city or township, and you have one minute.
Hi, my name is Alicia Harmon. It's my first time actually publicly speaking. And I thought I'd share with you my family history. My family comes from Poland. My great-grandpa did. He actually came here because of Hitler. And he actually had a dream from God to leave Poland. And while my other family members thought of him as crazy and said that will never happen here, he actually left, came to America. And those who stayed and thought he was nuts actually ended up dying in the concentration camps, all of them. And I just want to encourage everyone to don't go the same way and just remind yourself that every overstep and everything, every mandate causes division. It causes chaos and it causes things that are not good for this country. I know when, before the mandate, so many more people were getting along and it was wonderful. It was amazing. And I kind of want that back, so.
Our next speaker is Sandy. Sandy, please state your name, city or township, and you have one minute.
Sandy Benton, Spring Lake. As Republicans, how are you upholding the brand? For those who own businesses, would you want someone who sleeps on the job, ignores customers, ignores company standards, embarrassing your company? Liberty, limited government, bringing in bureaucracy are all principles found in our Republican platform. Our own county GOP has asked you to work to rescind this order. As Republicans, you should be adhering to our amazing platform. And it is amazing. That acknowledges God's hand on creation, that he is the author of liberty woven into our DNA. But instead, you use the leftist tactics of playing the victim. You pretend you have no authority and yet you are the governing entity. And you advance power to unelected bureaucrats. Well, gentlemen, there will be a change. We pray your hearts soften. But if not, you've already handed over your seats to the true constitutional conservatives who have a vested interest in this area in West Michigan and in the nation. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Marcellin. Please state your name, city or township, and you have one minute.
Marcellin Bial, Thomas Township. I'm against this mask mandate on the children ages four to sixth grade. It is child abuse, physical, emotional, and psychological. It is affecting my children every single day. My son had a teammate who committed suicide due to mandates that could have been prevented without these mandates. There are zero deaths. Zero. The imminent danger for COVID for ages five through 14 is zero in the county. The first one, zero deaths, COVID deaths, zero to nine. Next one, zero deaths, 10 to 19 in this county. The health officer is responsible for this county, not the state, not the nation, this county.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marcellin.
Our next speaker is Barth. Please state your name, city or township, and you have one minute.
My name is Barth Scudder. Thank you for listening. I'm from Georgetown Township. The people are speaking. The question is, are you listening? The people are here speaking. I don't see and I don't hear anybody that's saying, I want to put a mask on my child. Not a single person here is saying, I'd like to bring my child in and have a mask on them. You're our representatives. Are you listening to that? Or are you not listening? Apparently you're not listening. I worked for 30 years for Michigan State Police. I made lots of arrests. I followed the law. What do you think people that are good people, that are honest people, that are asking you to make good judgments are going to do next? Think about it. What are they going to do next? If this doesn't work, what's next? I arrested those people, lots of those people. Those people were wrong because they were breaking the law. What do you think these people are going to do? Each of you, ask yourself, if you don't make a good decision on this, what are they going to do?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jen. Please state your name, city or township, and you have one minute. Jen, green one? No? Okay, then our next one, Steve. Please state your name, city or township, and you have one minute.
Steve Fisher, Georgetown Township. Thank you for your time. I want to shed some light today that you may not have had a chance to get before. Imminent danger of death does not exist. If it does, then I ask you and all of us and the health department to show us that this virus exists. People are getting ill, that is true. But if there is a virus pandemic, then it must be proven to exist. Nowhere in the world has the COVID-19 virus been disclosed or shown to exist. No lab, no hospital, no virologist, nowhere, nobody, no doctor has done this. So we now have an unapproved shot that does not meet the definition of a vaccine to protect against something that doesn't exist with zero liability to drug companies that continually push their agenda to mask against an undisclosed, non-existent thing. Sounds like a scam? It's a scam. We need your help to fight this scam by holding the health department accountable for rules on a non-existent virus. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Justine Robinson. Please state your name, city or township, and you have one minute.
Hi, my name is Justine Robinson. I'm Holland, from Holland. I wasn't on talk today, but from all the voices, people, you know, everyone coming up here is just really disgusting hypocrisy, I see. You know, 2020, I was protesting for George Floyd and people were telling me he deserved it because he didn't comply or follow the rules. And now we're looking at a global pandemic and people aren't following the rules. What is up with that, you know? And people want to relate it to their religion. Leave state, leave your religion out of our government. You know, that's why church and state are separate. So, and this is science. Just educate yourself in introspect. We all had a month of quarantine where bodies were piled up in New York and in parks around the world. And you're here, tell your own self, excuse me. You are harming everyone else with your own self-destruction, and that is wrong. You, all you people need to look at yourselves.
Thanks, Justin.
Our next speaker is Sally. Please state your name, city or township, and you have one minute.
We all know this is about the election, so let me just throw that out there. When I asked my commissioner, which was Randy Mapalyn, to be sure that he is on the right side of this issue for there will be consequences, he called that a threat and claimed that these new rules, such as a one minute to speak, are in place to protect the safety of the people and that nobody should have to be threatened. He says he will follow the orders of the sheriff. So you see, in their eyes, it is okay to threaten all of us and all of our children that if we do not follow their orders, no matter how much proof we present, that their orders do not make sense, then we could actually lose our livelihood. Many have. Many lives have been lost. So you see, people, being here is great. But what we really need to do is just stand up and say enough. Just say no. I will not comply. Can't you see our system has been turned upside down? And for whatever reason, these elderly white men have dug themselves in and they are not ever going to listen to us. So parents, it's time to stand together, do not put a mask on your child if you believe it is harmful.
I have a mask. And I'm not sure if they're in here. Is Matt in here?
Yep.
Okay, you're off. Please state your name, city or township. You have one minute.
Hi there, Matt Hetrick, Georgetown Township. So I just had to come in here just to see everyone's faces because watching from a monitor amongst a thousand people last week or a couple of weeks ago was more challenging. So I have no idea why we have to keep coming down here. If we elected you guys and gals to represent us, I don't know why we're asking and begging and pleading. I don't know why we're outside today. That seems odd. So I guess at some point, we're going to find out how this election process works. A lot of people are just really realizing how this works. People haven't been paying attention. But now we are. So we want you guys to do the right thing. We encourage you to do the right thing. If you're listening to the people truthfully, you will know the right thing. We don't have to tell you. Thank you.
Our next person is Lori DeYoung. You have, please state your name, city or township, and you have one minute.
My name is Lori. I'm from Hudsonville. I have been in the medical field for 45 years. I've worn masks. I have tolerated them. I've worn N95 masks. They're only good for three or four hours. Did you know that? And the cloth masks that we make our children wear are not working at all. The paper masks, the masks that nurses wear are only good for a couple of hours. And do you know that there's more germs in your mouth than there is in your butt? Think of that, wearing that mask over and over and over. And you think little kids wash their hands? Well, probably not. To have these masks mandated is just really poor. And I don't want to give up that freedom. I have a special needs child who gets very anxious, does not want to wear his, and I don't make him. I had COVID. Was I sick? You betcha. Was I in the hospital? Yep. Was I in oxygen? Yep. But I got better. And to this day, now I cannot wear a mask. It is too oppressive and it makes me very anxious. And I've done it forever. And I think you guys need to vote to do what is right for the cause.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Laura. Please state your name, city or township, and you have one minute.
My name is Laura Holsteg. I'm from Blendon Township. I just have a verse for you guys today. For God has not given me a spirit of fear, but of power and of love and of a sound mind. Stop being afraid.
That's everyone.
Okay, all right. We're asking you all to leave at this time. And I'm going to call a recess. All right. So you're going to call on that first person?
No.
Sherry, you going to call?
Going to call.
Okay.
Megan Zychus, I believe is her name. Megan, you need to unmute yourself, state your name, city or township, and you have one minute.
Megan, can you hear me?
Is she muted?
Megan, are you muted? Okay, let's go on to the next person.
Oh, I'm here.
Oh, she's here. Okay.
Okay.
All right, Megan.
Are you ready?
Yes.
Over nine million immunosuppressed people like me live in the U.S. We are not politics. We are quieter because we are already fighting illnesses. I am a local immunosuppressed Mayo patient. And while some deny the importance of masks or vaccines, they know people like me who are immunosuppressed, people with cancer, organ transplants, or rare illnesses. We cannot risk exposure to COVID. My family has been housebound for 18 months. Thank you officials for not disregarding our health. The law protects you and you protect us. We rely on you and you are standing with intelligence and compassion. Each of us have an intrinsic value as children of God. Protect the meek, for we shall inherit the earth. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Who's next?
I'm going to keep moving this. Sarah Vanderwall. State your name, city, township.
Hi, can you hear me?
Can you speak up just a little bit?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me now?
Yes, that's much better. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, you're welcome. Hi, my name is Sarah Vanderwall and I'm from Hudsonville. And I just wanted to say thank you for allowing people to speak via Zoom. I have five kids at home and I'm unable to be there in person. And I also personally have some immunocompromised friends and family members that I don't want to get sick. So I appreciate you enforcing the mask mandate, listening to the health department and the scientists and doctors and doing what's best for our youngest children.
Thank you, Sarah. Who's next?
Next we have Tracy. Tracy, can you unmute yourself, state your name, your city, township, and you have one minute.
Tracy, we're not hearing you. Can you unmute yourself? Okay, let's go on to the next person.
Next we have Kathy Seaver. You can state your name, city, township, and you have one minute.
Hi, this is Kathy Seaver, Allendale Township. Thank you to those who support the health department with the mask mandate. I do not wish to see another 662,106 lives ended by this virus at this time next year, especially as the Delta variant is affecting our youth. On October 13, 2021, the Mayo Clinic reported that, quote, "In the last couple of weeks, the American Academy of Pediatrics has reported a significant increase in COVID-19 cases amongst people under 18 years of age," unquote. According to the Mayo Clinic, quote, "Face masks combined with other preventative measures such as getting vaccinated, frequent hand washing, and physical distancing can help slow the spread of the virus," unquote. Please stay vigilant so that we can eventually move on from this horrible illness. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy.
Next we have Karen. Next, we have Karen. Karen, if you can unmute yourself, state your name, your city, township, and you have one minute.
Hi, my name is Karen DeVries, and I am in Holland, Michigan, South Side. I'm just troubled a little while ago when one of the moms was trying to speak for maybe ten seconds longer. Her mic was cut. She had officials standing up next to her quickly to move her along. Before that, I heard the commissioners giggling because the mom was angry and making a comment such as, wow, she was angry. However, you've put our back against the wall with these kids and with these mandates. We have Doug Van Essen making comments that there's a legal right for vaccinations to be mandated, and we can't have an extra ten seconds or be left down in between times. And I think it's time to respect the people that are trying to fight for freedoms.
Who's next?
Next, we have Gary. Gary, if you could unmute yourself, state your name, city, township, and you have one minute.
Gary Boyd, City of Grand Haven. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. I just want to thank the commission for doing their jobs and following the Health Department's mandates. And that's it. I just wanted to thank you guys for taking the time to listen to everybody, even though we all disagree. You just keep doing the job you're doing. Haters are gonna hate. And thank you for the time.
Thanks, Gary.
Next, we have Becky. State your name, city, township. You have one minute.
Hi, Becky Dieter, Spring Lake. I was not planning to speak today, but I am just absolutely disgusted at the comments that have publicly been made, mainly by Bergman, and how you're basically trying to wash your hands of this and saying there's nothing you can do, and we know better. Again, I wasn't going to speak today, but when you had your hot mic, Bergman, and were basically making fun of a mom who, yeah, was upset, and yeah, was mad, and you continued to make fun of her, and then there was lots of laughing up there. It's pretty evident to all of us that you're not listening and that you don't care. I have signed the pre-call, so prepare to be recalled, or you can save us all a lot of trouble and resign now. Thank you.
Thanks, Becky. Is that it?
Got a few more. Keep raising your hand. Casey. Get yourself, state your name, city, township, and you have one minute.
Casey Koopmans, Georgetown Township. I want to give my thanks to Lisa and her team and give them my full support. It grants my son with health issues his freedom to attend school more safely. Last month, I talked a lot about community, and today I want to speak about patriotism and liberty. We all mourn the loss of thirteen American soldiers, true patriots, willing to sacrifice it all for people half a world away they don't even know. And in our own county, we have people unwilling to wear a mask, a temporary inconvenience for the benefit of the person who lives next door. A patriot is defined as a person who vigorously supports their country and is prepared to defend it against its enemies. The enemy here is the virus, although some people don't think it's real. Not each other. Where are the patriots? Regarding freedom, something we've also heard a lot about, a word that's been misused and misunderstood. I talked about community freedom last time. Individual freedom and liberty is a fabulous thing, but one's individual freedom ends when it threatens the life and health of others. And during a pandemic, that line has been drawn appropriately by the Health Department, so I ask the board to continue to support them. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey.
Up next, we have David. David, if you can unmute yourself, state your name, city, township. You have one minute.
Dave Brody, Allendale Township. I asked the commissioners, how many of you dropped off a son or daughter to school this morning with a muzzle, I mean mask strapped to their ears? And I'll ask it again. How many commissioners this morning dropped off a son or daughter with a mask strapped to their ears? And how many of you commissioners wear a mask from eight o'clock till three thirty in the afternoon every single day and wear it over your nose and your mouth? These four to twelve-year-olds, they don't know how to wear masks. And my second thing is, is the health officer said in a presentation that one of the reasons that this mandate could be lifted is if the transmission level goes to blue. Ninety-six percent of the counties in the United States are red, and then they have to go to orange, and then they have to go to yellow, and then they have to go to blue. The scaling on this is way off. The CDC has to redefine this. And the third thing is, is this health officer can change this. That is one of the things in the presentation that they said can happen to lift the mandate. The health officer can decide at their discretion to change it. The officers of the commissioners have leveraged.
Thanks, David. Okay, and then I think there's one that just came into the room.
Yes, Jen Greenland.
Jen, you.
You can stand at the podium. Please state your name, city or township, and you have one minute.
My name is Virginia Greenlee. I'm from Park Township. On what side of history do you want to stand? Do you want to stand on the side of history in which we are fighting for our freedoms, for faith, for medical freedom, because right now we have medical tyranny? I've been in the medical field for over twenty-five years, things are being tested for me than they ever were before. You all know a lot of information, but you're under the control, and many of you are being brainwashed to believe that you're doing what's good for people when it isn't. There is no true autopsy of a true pure COVID. The flu disappeared, colds disappeared, and you can look at your statistics. What's going to happen this year with the seasonal flu? This is a bioweaponized flu, and there's actually a larger agenda, which some of you know about, but others of you are afraid to look at that because you're too busy thinking you're going to look in this tunnel of healthcare of what's safe because CDC is telling you this. But do you realize who's speaking to CDC?
All right.
Katie, is that it for Zoom?
It was when we started, but hands keep getting raised.
Motion to adjourn. So moved.
Do you want to take a break?
Do we have more? How many more hands do we have?
Yep, okay. I just want to make an announcement that there is a severe thunderstorm warning that's out right now. So for those that may be in outdoors or indoors, just so you know, there is a warning that's out there right now. So we're going to go ahead. We have, I think, six or seven more on Zoom that we're going to allow to speak. And then we're going to close out our meeting for today.
Names that I have right now are Marleese, Kathleen, Ronaldin, Elizabeth, Tanya, and David. Marleese, you are first. If you want to go ahead and unmute yourself, state your name, city, township, and you have one minute.
Thank you. This is Marleese Madderson. I am from Zealand. I'm a grandmother of two, ages four and seven, too young to be vaccinated. While I would prefer that the Health Department came out with a mandate for masks for all age groups, daycare up through high school, I do support the mandate that they have issued, and I do want to thank the commissioners for the work that you have done in standing behind that mandate. Thank you.
Thank you, Marleese. Who's next?
Up next, we have Kathleen. Unmute yourself, state your name, city, township. You have one minute.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Lucas. I am in Zealand Township. Just wanted to say that I support the mask mandate that came from Ottawa County Health Department and wanted to thank the board for their hard work keeping our kids safe in schools this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Marleese. Who's next?
Up next, we have Ronaldin, I believe is how you pronounce that. Can you state your name, city, township, and you have one minute?
Hi, my name is Kathleen Lucas. I am in Zealand Township. Just wanted to say that I support the mask mandate that came from Ottawa County Health Department and wanted to thank the board for their hard work keeping our kids safe in schools this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. That to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their powers from the consent of the government. deriving their powers from the consent of the governed. That whenever any government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or abolish it.
That's my daughter. She memorized that, and we came here for both of us to speak, but we're sharing the minute because even though we're out in the lobby, you're not allowing us to come in or use two different Zooms to say our piece. So, um, I'm unhappy with what happened after the last meeting.
Thanks, Ronalyn. Who's next?
Um, next, I have Elizabeth Rudd. You can unmute yourself, state your name, city, township, you have one minute.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth. I'm from Georgetown Township, and I just wanted to say that I am in support of the mask mandate. I would like to see it extended to include three and four-year-old preschool. I actually pulled my son from a school that was not requiring masks in preschools and put him into a school that is. And I want to thank the Commission for their hard work that you're doing to keep us safe. Thank you.
Thanks, Elizabeth. Who's next?
Um, up next, I have Tanya Harris. Tanya, if you could unmute yourself, state your name, cities, township, and you have one minute.
Hi, my name is Tanya Harris, George, Allendale Township. Sorry. Um, you can hear me?
Yes.
All right. Um, I believe there's some confusion amongst those people that are standing up against the mandate. This isn't an anti-vaxination, anti-mask, anti-quarantine, anything like that. This is freedom, freedom to choose. It's a parent's choice if their child wants to be masked. We are not telling you, you cannot wear the mask. We are not telling you have to wear the mask. This mandate is wrong. It should be a parent's choice to decide. So basically, because I only have 25 seconds, this is what needs to be done. Fire the Health Department, rescind the orders, and/or the recall will begin. I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya. Who's next?
The last person that I have is David Barnowski. David, if you could unmute yourself, state your name, city, township, you have one minute.
My name is David Barnowski. I'm from Fort Sheldon Township, West Olive. The law hasn't changed. It supports the public health order. The science hasn't changed. It still supports wearing masks because to let a parent choose lets them choose for everyone around their child. We still need other people to wear masks to protect those who are not yet vaccinated. There are cynical people behind all of these others who are testifying. They can't win a logical argument, so they make it something else to serve other political agendas. There is still only one right answer that follows the science, no matter how many people say otherwise. Support the Health Department, please.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
That's it? All right. So I entertain a motion to adjourn. Remove the supportive comments or questions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Thank you.